And, uh, let's see.
Number two.
First item is public comments not listed on the agenda. We have a card from Catherine.
It's okay. You don't have to do that. Just Catherine's phone.
Okay.
I'll have to say it for the record.
I'll let you say it for the record.
He's Lois.
Okay. Come forward.
Huh?
Have a seat up here.
Okay. Well, I need to. And this is too long.
How was your trip?
Good.
I'm here representing Barclay Neighborhood Association and our association's land use committee has done a review of the zoning in Barclay Hills and we have some concerns about zoning issues. There seems to be a high number of high-density zone areas in Barclay Hills, more than other neighborhoods. And of particular concern is the area around Mountain View. Mountain View is a dead-end street. It feeds into Malala right after you go up the last hill going up Malala, onto Malala, the last hill which is on a curve. Mountain View is right there. And the only way in and out is Mountain View. And looking also at the two streets that feed into Mountain View, they both are also dead-end streets. So our neighborhood association would like to see if you all could set up a work-study session, schedule one, so that we could take the time to go through the information we've collected in more detail than what I've presented to you tonight and share our concerns about this particular issue. So that's my purpose here tonight is to request a work-study session to revisit the zoning, specifically the zoning on and around Mountain View. The packet that I gave you is some of the visuals that were presented at our association meeting. The numbers on them don't mean much because they've been taken from other things, you know, they were originally numbered four. But this is just to give you all a chance to look at the area we're talking about. But I don't want to take your time tonight to go into great detail on this. I thought you'd appreciate that. Okay? So that's my purpose here, is to request this work-study session.
Very good. Tony, what's the procedure for getting this scheduled?
It would be at the, you know, the discretion of the planning commission to decide what they'd like to review and when. You know, I think one other thing is, I'm not sure if the neighborhood association has contacted any of the property owners that would be specifically impacted by this and how they...
They would like this commission to review the zoning because of, we're, right now we have some significant bottleneck traffic issues on that particular part of Malala. Our traffic committee also has been working with the city on some of those existing traffic issues. But the way the zoning is on Mountain View, the R2 zoning, which is, as you all know, high-density zoning, the potential for the lots that are currently on the market or held by people who have indicated they want to develop them, there are three lots there. Potentially just from those lots, there could be an additional 200, I wrote it down, 243 more vehicles using Mountain View going into and off of Malala on Mountain View. And we have concerns, I mean, yes, there's not adequate infrastructure to support additional traffic. We also have concerns about the watershed for Singer Creek with the two tributaries that farm that creek come right up to that part of Mountain View. So we have concerns about that, too. Bring more vehicles in, you end up with more oil on the streets that get washed into the gutters or into the park itself. So, like I said, it's a lot more complicated than I can cover in three minutes.
Sure.
So.
Do we need to schedule this? Do we need to make a motion? What's the correct procedure?
Well, I guess is there a consensus that this is something that you would like to add to your work plan and add an additional staff review time to do?
Discussion by the board?
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing what they have to say. It does look, based on the zoning map, that there is a very high concentration of property with that zoning right in one area. And I know I have a colleague that lives on Cedar Lane and it dead-ends everywhere down there. I mean, there's no way in or out of there in Mountain View unless you are going north. It's a little difficult to make that left-hand turn to get back to Malala. So I'd be interested in hearing what they have to say.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, I was just wondering, I know that a lot of the zones were recently changed and I was wondering if there was any kind of traffic analysis done, you know, probably a general one, maybe it's covered in the TSP or if there was anything specifically done for the Malala Avenue area and any of the streets that feed into that. And if it was readily available, would there, I just want to know, you know, what, if anything, any kind of traffic study that was done for this area would say, what the level of service at the intersections are and...
We're going to have to research that.
Can I speak to that?
Can we hold on one second?
Yeah.
We can, I don't want to get into a debate of doing this tonight.
I was offered to get that information.
I'm just talking in realms of what kind of information we would want to see.
I'm trying to think that we, you know, we did the Malala Avenue plan and then, you know, this would have probably been rezoned if there were any, you know, in 2004, I think was the last time we went through. We'd have to go back and look at that. You know, there were, there was a subdivision in there that did look at some of the transportation impacts as well as the public works facility that went in with some upgrades to the street itself. So there is some information, there's been very limited development in this area specifically around these higher-density residential homes. A lot of it in there is pre-existing apartments that were in there prior.
I guess the question is whether we really, we want to hear it or not and we can deal with whatever we need later.
You know, before we commit ourselves to anything, I guess my concern is, what's the protocol when it comes to city staff? Do we, by agreeing to have a work study, do we obligate city staff to spend time on this that hasn't been budgeted? What's the protocol of that?
You're putting in a request, so we would obviously want to see the information and try and prepare something so that it is a useful work session for you.
Right. What's the lead time on getting something like that put together?
I guess I would just request that they submit the information that they have so that we have a chance to look at it and prepare it and then get it back to you. You know, at this point, you're probably looking at your July work session as the earliest opportunity.
Yeah, I was thinking it'd be at least a month before we get that into your schedule.
If, or in August, maybe too.
There's another agency here that's impacted by this that's not represented tonight and that's the fire factor, access by large fire apparatus into a neighborhood with high density and limited access. And these people have to have some input. It would be not wise to keep them from participating in that, and I'm talking about the North Clackamas people. So that should be coordinated because if they don't get any input, then whatever input we get is limited, you know, that one big factor. The fire, public safety and access is, to my way of thinking, is a real important factor in this. Just let one of those apartments go up and you've got limited access to it. You'll find yourself...
Well, I guess the exist, well...
Yeah, we're not really debating the issue tonight. We're deciding whether we want to hear this and we'll work out the details, I guess.
I think we should start, if this is something the commission wants to do, I would request that the information that they have be provided to staff.
I think that's reasonable.
We can put it together, they need to give us a contact information. We'll let them know when the work session's going to be scheduled. If it's something that we need to follow up and have a broader conversation with after that work session, we can talk about that.
Do we have a consensus with the commission?
I'd like to hear more and see the staff's response.
Yes.
So, let's have a motions.
I would so move.
With information that's readily available, Tony.
Yes.
So, we're going to request that a work session be convened to review this matter. Applicant has the obligation of providing whatever research material that they have available and then allows city staff time to respond to that and coordinate a work session. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, onward, onward. You're on hold, Charles. The next, the next item is adoption of planning commission meetings from previous meetings. And as I recall, we needed to go through these one at a time. December 12th, 2011.
Maybe we should start with October.
Let's see, I'm going backwards. October 24th, 2011.
I'd like to move we approve the minutes of October 24th, 2011.
Second.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Meeting minutes from the November 14th, 2011 meeting?
I move we adopt the meeting minutes from November 14th, 2011.
Second.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And we have the meeting minutes from December 12th, 2011.
I move that we approve the October 24th, 2011 minutes.
We're just taking turns.
December 12th.
December 20.
I'm sorry, December 12th. Right.
All right. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, we're done with that. Item four on our agenda is the request for continuance of TP 12-01 and VR 12-02. The, we have public comments, do we take those?
Yeah, we'll take them.
Not following our procedures, so...
Do you have it printed?
I don't have it printed. I don't know what I did with that.
Yeah, I thought you had it.
I did.
I think they gave it to you at a previous meeting. You can read it off the board.
Okay. So, looking for staff report on this?
You have to officially open the public hearing.
So we do have a, we had a planning commission hearing advertised to be heard tonight. We've been working with the applicant. So, since we do have public comment that is, that is in the record tonight, we are going to request that you open, open the public hearing.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to ask if anybody has any ex parte conflict bias they'd like to declare?
Nope. I think, can I, can I suggest that we open the public hearing for public comment and then wouldn't we vote on the request for continuance?
I, I'll just go ahead and read in what our attorney usually does.
Sounds good to me.
Following this public hearing on land use applications scheduled tonight for TP 12-01 and VR 12-02, a subdivision in variance request. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedures that the commission will follow is set out in state law in the Oregon Municipal Code, Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart behind me. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. You should fill out your address on the card so the city can notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony evidence shall be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written material received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing in continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised with the consideration of the city commission or Luba or both as provided in the city code. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated responder to the issue precludes an action for damages in separate court. Does any commissioner, so why don't you go ahead and please open the record for files TP 12-01 and VR 12-02?
Okay, the hearing is open for this request. Is there any public comment?
We'll hear from Chair Kidwell.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Michael Robinson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. As Tony said, the applicant would like a two-week continuance. We've extended the 120-day clock by 14 days, the period of the continuance. Happy to answer any questions. And I understand some folks want to talk, so happy to hear them and will take their comments into consideration as we work with staff.
Okay, are there any questions by the commission?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll take public comments. We have two cards. Brian Ward?
Yes, can I come up for a second?
Yes, sir.
You can more than come up for a second.
Yeah, I think in five minutes or so. Easy question. It'd be not really much of an issue at all.
Over by the Kmart and the Albertsons over there.
Mr. Ward, you're supposed to identify yourself.
Oh, yeah, Brian Ward, and I live at River Birch Place. And over by the Albertsons, the Kmart over there, they have began construction. I guess they leveled the area out. And is that, I just wonder, is that going to be housing, I assume, in there? Is that going to be real estate housing? Just wondered why it was all to our part.
Does that have to do with this application?
No, that's why I thought you said call it Brian Ward. I didn't know what part she'd come in here.
Okay, my understanding was that this, your comment had to do with this issue, the item on the agenda that we're hearing.
It doesn't...
Well, I think it's a question, I just want to know, what is going in there? Does anybody know?
Mr. Ward, we understand that you're asking a question, what Chair Kidwell was asking you. You said that you were here for Agenda Item Number Four, which is...
I didn't, I didn't think I put anything down.
Yeah, it says number four. So anyway, so you're, you're not wanting to testify on this issue?
No.
You want to ask a question that is unrelated to this issue?
Yes.
Okay.
How about if we, Mr. Ward, if you take a seat? We should, we should be done with this continuance in a couple of minutes here and I will come to speak with you.
At least you don't want to talk about it.
Yeah, I was just confused. It's all right. Frequently confused.
Thank you, sir. So hopefully on this same issue, we have Christine Kaczynski, okay?
My name is Christine Kaczynski and I live in unincorporated Clackamas County. Before I start to speak, I have a question for Tony. It's my understanding that this is going to be continued to June 25th. I would ordinarily request to keep the hearings open, but do I need to do that even if there's going to be another meeting?
No, the record will remain open.
Okay. Then I shall go on. The reason that I gave you a packet is because I've given you enough information for a lot more than three or four minutes. So I'm going to speed through and I hope that you take the time to read what I've given you. The number two, there's two goals in 2012 for the city of Oregon City, and that's to build a sustainable, healthy community that promotes safety and livability. Development on Maple Lane and Thayer Roads do not meet these goals. There's cut-through traffic in the Walnut Grove subdivision. These lots are only 3,500 square feet with little to no backyards, leaving children to play in the front, close to the street-facing traffic. I ask that you do your due diligence and read the 29 letters from angry Walnut Grove residents when Phase One was proposed. They speak to lack of safety, cut-through traffic, dangerous living conditions, and fears for their children. Safety and dangerous conditions exist on Maple Lane for the many citizens who walk here daily trying to reach the shopping center. The lots and Crabtree Terrace again are small, promoting the same dangerous living conditions as those of Walnut Grove. I now ask, where is the park for this area? There are no amenities for these people, no areas for children to play. Cut-through traffic is a major obstacle. There are sight-distance problems on clear view at Maple Lane that will become more dangerous. Traffic counts for Maple Lane are as much as 7,000 ADTs per day. I've given you traffic counts. A future park-and-ride is indicated at the south corner of the intersection of Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213. Thayer Road is now developing new homes, where these trips figured into the traffic analysis. The intersection of Maple Lane and Thayer fails county standards at LOSE. For erosion control, a citizen living in the 15700 Thayer Road area has reported concerns that gas lines may rupture on his property due to land movement and sliding of the earth. Just beyond the 15700 Thayer Road lies an area filled with a plethora of huge, deep-seated landslides that cannot be mitigated. The county, for the years 2006, 2007, paid more than $180,000 to fix this road and it must be maintained on an annual basis. I am asking you to consider the amount of traffic that this city is putting upon a road that really cannot be mitigated, it can't be moved. An erosion control plan was not provided for Phase One, even though parts of the subdivision are located close to an area of chaotically mixed and deformed masses of rock, colubium, and soil that have moved downslope in one or more events. The city is unable to provide police services. I urge you to watch the video of the February 1st, 2012 city commission meeting. At .34.24 of the tape, Commissioner Smith speaks to his concerns for the $3,500 voluntary fee paid by developers for police services. This testimony was given in a public hearing for an annexation where Commissioner Smith chose to vote no. I urge you to read all the information and attachments I have provided. I ask you to ask yourselves, can I really approve further development in an unsafe and unhealthy environment? And I ask if the plan has been approved by the fire chief. These streets are narrow. It will be difficult for fire trucks to maneuver into some of the areas due to difficulty of access. Unfortunately, the city seems to be building too many subdivisions with restricted access compromising the citizens' safety and making them vulnerable to becoming trapped and unable to reach safety in dangerous situations. I don't know that you can answer this question tonight, but perhaps at the next meeting. I would like to know, I would like to have someone explain the lot line adjustment at lots 600 and 700. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions?
If I may. Christine, where is the cut-through traffic occurring?
Again, if you read those 29 letters that came from the residency in Walnut Grove, it's coming through Walnut Grove. I believe, Tony's probably more familiar, but I believe the exits are on, it's Clearwater or Clearview, and then there's an exit on Effinger which goes out to Thayer Road. Again, these are real narrow streets.
So let me ask, so what people are perceiving as a shortcut, is they're, they're coming from where? They're coming from...
They're coming from Phase One of Crabtree Terrace.
And then they're cutting through...
That's the only access they have to get out.
And then it's coming through Maple Grove to get...
Through Walnut Grove.
Through, excuse me, Walnut Grove through to get to Thayer?
To get to Thayer or Maple Lane.
Or Maple Lane, okay.
Yes, they have no direct access.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Does the applicant have an opportunity to respond?
If you'd like, Chair, Michael Robinson, I'm Matt Down, but we'll respond if it's June 25th, right?
Okay. Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant at this time?
I think at this point, we just, we would just recommend that you continue with the record open to the June 25th, 2012 planning commission hearing.
Do we have a motion?
Can I ask Tony a question?
Go ahead.
Just because I'm not aware of it, Christine referred to, these were letters that were submitted as part of testimony on the first portion of this development, the 29...
I'd have to go back and look.
Back and look, yeah, okay.
It's quite possible.
You can...
I am not going to enter those into...
No, but you could just email me maybe and say with, because I'm not familiar with that, and I guess I can go back and look at the...
Okay. We've got to remember, we're on an evidentiary hearing here.
I understand.
Okay.
But she's referred to some things...
And if she would like those entered in the record, it's her responsibility to enter those into the record unless you... So we've got to be careful here that we're not going too far outside of...
So let me ask you one more question. Is, is the previous decision online that if I wanted to look it up and look at it?
I don't think it's been cut... Well...
The annexation would be, but...
The annexation would be, but the previous subdivision would not?
They were type two.
It would have been type two decisions. So I don't think that they're, we don't post the notices, we don't post the staff report decisions online.
Oh, okay, okay.
But that information could be submitted at, between now and the next meeting, the next hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Tony.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion to continue?
I move that we continue TP 1201 and VR 1202 to the next regular hearing.
I move that we continue TP 1201 and VR 1202 to the next regular hearing.
And keep coming.
I'm sorry. Oh, did you?
Sorry, sorry, back up.
Regarding this property.
Another card.
I'll just hang on to it, yeah. Mr. Boom?
My name's Gary Boo. I live at 14594 South Maple Lane Road, and I border this property, or this subdivision on the, in the northwest corner. And I'm wondering what the next 30 units consists of and where they're going to be located. Right now, the development seems to be coming from south to north, and on the drawing on the back of the sheet here, I don't see where the next 30 units are going.
Do we have the applicant come up and answer that question?
How about?
Tony will answer.
Yes. What I would recommend is that you contact our planning staff, and we can provide you whatever information you'd like. The planning commission does not have that information. They don't have the site plans here tonight.
Okay.
We have a full record.
Is that available online? Can I pull that, pull that down?
It is on, yes.
Okay. And one other question. The fencing that breaks the property, as the lots go down the backside of my property, what are the typical requirements for fencing between the properties? Is that?
I don't think we can answer that.
Once again, I would appreciate, why don't you give Pete Walter, the planner, if you'd like specific questions like that? This really is an appropriate venue.
Okay.
We can go into fence code, all kinds of code requirements. There would probably be a little bit more better use of your time in ours.
Are you with AKS?
No.
Are you representing John Jones?
I'm representing the applicant.
That's a.
If you want, if you want to correct your comments to the commission, I'm happy to take them and talk to the applicant.
Okay.
I'm finished, then. I'll just get the information online.
If you need to contact somebody, you can talk to Pete.
Contact should be on the front there.
Yeah.
It's on the notice, that if you can, you know, come back.
Applicant being AKS, that's who I contact?
No, Pete Walter, the city staff. His name's on that notice.
Okay, contact person.
Who's this contact person?
Way down at the bottom. I got it.
And his phone number's there.
Perfect.
And so if you have specific questions between now and the next hearing, I'd suggest to contact him, and he can supply you with information or direct you to where you can find that information.
Instruction-type details and.
Sure.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay. So do we have a motion?
Paul, that's a motion.
Okay. I move that we continue TP 1201 and VR 1202 to the next regular hearing of June 25th.
And keep the record open.
Keep the record open.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Thank you.
Okay. We had another card on an issue not related to Item Four from Brian Ward.
Tony, I don't think we can answer that question.
I'm sorry, I was doing something.
Mr. Ward had, he wanted to know what's going on at this particular.
I'm going to go talk with Mr. Ward out in the hall. It would be much more appropriate than here.
Thank you, Tony.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Very good, thank you.
As soon as I get this.
Okay.
Could we take just like a second for recess? I have a question.
Sure.
Do you have to?
We'll take a two-minute recess.
Do you need a form?
Two-minute recess?
To give you an update on our transportation system plan study that we've been working on since, I think, last summer, is that right, Carl? Carl Springer's here from DKSN Associates, and his firm has been doing the modeling and reviewing the existing conditions in Oregon City, what we anticipate to be the gaps and deficiencies in our transportation system with growth, and then some solutions that we're going to be proposing as a, as for consideration, that would eventually be included in the transportation system plan. We have set out some goals and objectives that we'll talk a little bit about tonight. And then the way we're approaching looking at solutions to transportation problems, or gaps and deficiencies, or just a plain old congested intersection are a little different than they used to be. And Carl, go into a lot of, a lot more of this with you this evening, but rather than have, thinking we're going to have lots and lots of money to construct big road projects anymore, we're looking at how we can be a little more practical in our approach, and which, in the long run, might end up being a good approach for a livable community, anyway. So Carl, take it away.
Nancy. Good evening, commission and chair. Carl Springer, DKSN Associates. I've been working out of the Portland office for the last 16 years. I think this is my 18th TSP. I've done a few of these. The interesting thing about Oregon City in this round of TSP updates, and of course you all know that you have an adopted TSP today, right? I mean, this is not a new document. Every time the regional body metro updates their regional transportation plan, the cities are asked to respond by making sure that what they're planning fits their own communities, basically. There's a few things that Nancy pointed to that are different this time around, and I'll try to bring your attention to that. This is a pretty straightforward presentation. If you guys have questions as we go along, we're inviting questions to specific points, but if you have other questions, feel free to ask. I don't think the crowd's going to mind if we take a little bit longer than.
Where's our crowd?
Than expected.
We also, we do have a work, an open house.
On the 18th, yes.
Next Monday night. So hopefully, there'll be a big crowd.
Oh, they will, they will. I mean, as these things go, once we actually get down to dollars and projects, the crowds pick up. Less people are concerned about goals and objectives. Somehow, it just doesn't really get them out of their house. So, let's see, so the big questions we're asking at this stage, as you begin a TSP update, you're looking at, biggest thing that Oregon City is doing here is you're changing the horizon date for city growth out to the year 2035. So you're looking at a longer term, both for Oregon City and all the cities around it. So when we're doing our analysis, we're looking at growth from all areas, not just isolated to the city. The way we do planning this time around is what's called performance-based planning, so that we're trying to take your city goals and express them in terms of performance targets, and trying to quantify and give you some kind of a rating scale about how well the solutions that we're developing fit with the community's goals and objectives. It's a little bit different style than we have in years past, because it gives more even weight to other modes. In years past, we've spent a lot of dollars and a lot of focus on how you get around the city in a car, how quickly you can get around the city in a car. And to be fair, according to this slide, we've got here, there's lots of other things going on in a city than just driving in a car from place to place. So I think what you'll find as we go through this process, we'll have a lot more attention to detail for the pedestrian and bike modes, access to transit stops, those kinds of things we have in plans past. I think it's a welcome change for the community, because frankly, a lot of the trips relatively short in a community, you know, they're one, two, three, four miles, trips that can be done well by other modes, if you just give them facilities and make them a little bit safe. So those of you who are veterans of TSP updates, it's a pretty standard process, and this is the standard process. We are well through these stages, we're down to the orange one there in the corner, we're starting to look at solutions. So we've looked at the way the system operates today, we looked at what our regulatory framework is, we've identified gaps and deficiencies, which means parts of the city that where the street isn't built the way the city would like it, if you were to go build it today, it would look different than it is now. There's lots of streets like that in every city, because these are, you know, they're old streets, they were built before the standards came into place. Development canons, and the street didn't necessarily catch up with the development. So now we're looking, like I said, at 2035. We've come up with a number of solutions, we're really not going to get into that too much tonight. That's actually the topic for the next, for the open house, is talking about how those solutions might fit. And it's a process where we give our recommendations, and we're looking for feedback from the city for sure, for the communities. The partnering agencies are all going to weigh in on these, because we are making a few recommendations on state facilities, so we're definitely concerned what ODOT thinks. The last two stages after that, once we get our arms around the right sets of solutions, and what the city can reasonably afford, then we'll move forward with the last two steps. Developing any kind of code changes, plan amendment changes that need to get put into place to adopt this thing, because if, as you know, TSP by itself really doesn't carry a lot of weight until it's incorporated into the comp plan, until the land development code reflects the standards and the principles in the TSP, and that's when you guys get to actually apply it, when developments come in, so.
Before you go forward, I just had a question, because it's very pertinent to tonight's hearing. We heard from a lady who had concerns about traffic in her particular neighborhood related to zoning. During the course of, up to this point, the feedback you've gotten from the community, have you heard that kind of concerns? Have you gotten input about those kinds of issues today?
Laura might have an idea on this, but I haven't heard that kind of comment specifically. I mean, I guess, one thing I will say is that when we're doing our forecast, we're assuming that the city's going to grow as it's currently allowed in your comp plan and zones, zone map. We're not assuming anything radically different than what's currently provided there, and we're growing to the level that's reasonably expected by the year 2035. I mean, I can't recall in Oregon City if that's built out, or how close to built out that is, but a lot of cities, it's not built out by the year 2035. So any development that was in her particular neighborhood, if it's allowed under the current comp plan and zoning, it would be included in the forecast work that we're doing.
Okay.
There is a large public involvement piece of this. We've had a lot of outreach and notices and meetings and things like that, that we've been to. We have a good website, which is octransportationplan.org, and on that website, there's an interactive comment map where you can leave comments, you can comment on other people's comments, and we haven't seen too many comments of too much traffic. More specific, it would be like, an intersection is designed funny, or there's some particular problem at some particular place. Not too much associated with development in general.
I just, I just found it curious, we had somebody that obviously had been involved in the neighborhood with some concern about transportation issues, and it seemed like that would have been an appropriate thing for them to bring to the website and bring to your attention if they had a concern about it.
Exactly. All right. Chair, you're okay now? Oops. Walk on. All right, there we go. So the other side was the technical process. You should also know that there is the public review process. All the, as we go through this, we'll be generating interim work products, and they get posted on the website, and so before that happens, staff gets one crack at them, and then the public and any other agencies will be reviewing them through formal committees that we have. We've got technical and a stakeholders committee that looks at all these documents, and then we'll reflect those comments and feedback in a revised draft. Eventually, that'll all percolate down to a draft transportation system plan update, and we'll come back to you at that stage again and say, here's kind of the way it looks, and here's the biggest changes compared to the current plan you have now. And we'll, by that time, we'll have more specifics on what the projects are, where the funding will come from, what the implication are, is in terms of any potential changes to either things like street design standards, or your development code in terms of, you know, when you get a land use application, there's usually the standard traffic study. Well, the scope and nature of that traffic study may change as a result of the plan update, because of the policy outcomes. You may be looking for different things than you have been in the past, so that'll get reflected at that point, too. And obviously, finally, this thing doesn't kick into gear until it gets adopted by the city commission. So we talked briefly about performance targets, because in the olden days, guys like me used to be traffic engineers, and we used to design street systems and highway systems, and there was a lot of focus on this thing called volume-to-capacity ratio, or level of service. Do you know which, either one of those, both of those? All right, you're good there? And so most of our plans were driven by that metric. How can we lay out the street system to accommodate that kind of mobility during the busiest hours of the day? So what's happening now is we're seeing a much broader canvas in terms of performance metrics for all those things on the map there, or in terms of how accessible transit is, how easy it is to move around the community outside of a car. And there's some specific targets that we're going to be asked to respond to in terms of things like freight mobility, safety, how many people walk and ride and take transit in the community today, and how would you like to see that change in the future? And so we have to develop goals, policies, and projects to try to facilitate that change. You know, as an example, at the metro level, they have ambitious target of, I think it's tripling the pet and bike trips between the current year and the horizon year. Tripling. I'm a numbers guy, but, you know, that's, so I've taken it from about 10 or 15% up to almost 50%. And that's targeted, really, to be clear, that's a short, those are for short trips, one- and two-mile trips. We're not going to ask anybody to ride their bike to downtown Portland from here, although I bet there might be one or two that may do that, I don't know. There's always a few brave ones out there. All that to say is, the performance targets give us some kind of indicator in terms of how the system's working, not just for cars and trucks, but for all the other pieces. So once we find an issue, or solution, or gap, or deficiency, we go through this kind of a cascading process to look for solutions. And really, this is kind of a logical way to go about it. You look for the solutions that are basically fine-tuning your existing system, those are usually the lower-cost, least-change kinds of issues. There's that acronym up there at the top, the TSMO, we fondly call it TSMO. It's a combination of managing the highway system mainly. Those tools are emerging at ODOT. They include things like, you know, smarter traffic signal timing, smarter freeway ramps. In the not-too-distant future, there'll be things that'll give you a continuous feed of what traffic conditions are like, what your routing should be, to get around town when you just, and tell you some recommendations about when you should leave, how you should get there, to save time or save money or both. That's really not that far away, frankly. I mean, the technology has changed pretty amazingly in my career. It used to be a lot, it used to be people would drive all the same route every day at the same time, but now we're a lot more informed travelers, so we can make different kinds of choices. Going down the list, just point out, obviously, what we can do to strengthen bike and pet connections. Transit's a tough one, you know, as a community, the best we're trying to do is get our, get the people to and from the major stop safely. They have less influence on how transit services can change, although we can, the city can always make their case, but ultimately, it's a bit outside the city's jurisdiction, so we're looking at ways to make better and safer use of the facilities that are out there. You can see down at the bottom, the last choices are widening and new roadways, and that's partly because they're the most impactful to the community, and they're also really expensive. If you've looked at any kind of roadway project lately, they're tens of millions of dollars, pretty much, as a starting point, you know, if you're talking about a new roadway. I don't know what the jug handle project cost, but it was, I'm sure, tens of millions. Sure it wasn't less than 10 million.
Construction, 22 million.
There you go. See? So that would buy you a lot of bike and transit access improvements, 22 million, just as a trade-off. And it's not like this is an either-or process, we're going to try to kind of do our best at all levels, but we're going to need to recognize that the higher levels, you can make good progress. So this is the part where I was talking about, you know, taking your transportation goals, we kind of, we took the goals that you have, and we reorganized them a bit to try to be reflective of this new performance way of looking at things, and we're going to quantify or somehow come up with a scale. I think there's an arrow there. No, we had deleted the arrow. I guess I did delete the arrow. I don't like flying things in my slides, frankly, animation makes me a little bit nuts. But what I will say is, for each of those goals, we'll have what we call evaluation criteria, so it's some way to measure. So it's some way to measure how well that little bullet point is working. You know, we can talk about health and safety. We can talk about how efficient people get around by how long their trips are, for example, on average, and how much congestion they have to sit through on average, those kinds of things. Those are kind of technical indicators that we use to get a read on how well the system is working. And really helps us understand what kind of solution would best advance that kind of a goal further down the line. So a lot of information on that slide. I don't know if it overwhelmed you or not. Do you have any questions about that? I try not to overwhelm slides like that, but that one went that way. So do those seem like kind of a good reflection of goals of the city? I mean, I know you're seeing it for the first time, but they should be familiar kinds of notions. I don't think there's anything too radical up there. The last one's really not very ambitious, you know, complying with state and regional transportation plans. That's kind of a given. It's if we don't comply with the state, regional, state transportation plans to some level, there's some issues there in terms of getting future funding opportunities. Most people want to be, and we'll guide the process to make sure that happens. I think people, maybe I'm digging myself into a hole here, but, you know, the state transportation planning process gives you a lot, the city's a lot of flexibility on how that gets implemented. They just ask that there are certain bases that you touch as you go through the process and we just have to be able to demonstrate that. So I don't want to overstate that for you. It's not that restrictive. Okay, I'll keep going. So this is a snapshot of growth in 2035. And this, I guess, would be a measles diagram? So the bigger the circles, there's where the growth is happening. So red is housing and green is jobs. And, you know, the growth mostly lines, to the greatest extent, it mostly lines up with the project you just talked about and the three concept plan areas. So you've got the south end road concept plan area at the bottom of the screen, the red circle. And to be clear, the scope and nature of that concept plan has not been determined, but there's been some assumptions to date about kind of how the greater, how large that could be. Beaver Creek concept plan is the green circle in the bottom right. And then Park Place at the top. So depending when those move ahead, you know, it's a separate action that those things have to be annexed and get ready for urban development. But we have, at this point, assumed that will happen somewhere between now and the year 2035. That's the scale of growth you'll see mostly in the city. The little tiny dots elsewhere just say that there is some growth, but it's pretty limited growth. Anywhere else in Oregon City or frankly, in Westland across the river.
Carl, I wanted to mention that when we did our old TSP or our existing one, the metro model back then was a little more aggressive in terms of growth because we had experienced a lot of growth previous to it. I think we did that back in 2003 or something. And when they did the regional transportation plan update, they used the model. And then they changed the model, they used this beta model, right? And that was trying to be a little more reflective of what has really happened in the last 10 years because there was a tremendous slowing of growth primarily because of the recession that we went through and of the economic downturn. Now, they're also working on another model that's even more accurate for that. Unfortunately, we cannot use that one because they're not done with it yet and we're already starting our TSP. We don't expect to have huge differences in Oregon City. But I did want you to know that there has been a lot of examination of how we do these models to try to get as realistic as possible relative to the many things that we cannot predict.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if this is appropriate to bring it up now, but transit, mass transit, Trinmet.
Could you put your microphone down? Thank you.
A lot of the bus lines aren't available anymore. So we're planning for additional bus service to hopefully meet the needs of people that are growing in the areas outside.
Yeah, the transit is one of the items we look at in the TSP. And we've lost a couple of, we really haven't lost a lot of bus lines. We didn't have a lot to begin with. Our main, the worker bee, which is the 33 and the one that goes up to the college. We have not lost any service on that. In fact, we actually have frequent bus to Portland from Oregon City if you get to the transit center. But we will be, we've met with Trinmet to talk about that. We had a real long, productive meeting with them. And we will be summarizing a lot of the items that came from that meeting. And you're right, there won't be a lot of additional service at this time. But should things turn around a little, Trinmet, we'll be in conversations with them to try to get what we can for Oregon City. Then there's also, I think, an important component that came from our meeting with Trinmet. And that was that I think it'd be really great if we did a little more public education to let people know what services we do have in Oregon City. There's some park and rides around the city that you can use to get down to the transit center, which I bet a lot of people don't know about. So we're going to, that's going to be a recommendation out of the TSP to do kind of a public outreach campaign on what services Trinmet does provide.
Yeah, because at the same time, I'm hearing, you know, an increase in ridership in a lot of, in a lot of the places. You know, Oregon City's so far flung in different areas. You know, there's Park Place and then there's, you know, the south end area and then this area out towards Beaver Creek. You know, and Park Place especially, there's, you know, a lot of low income housing up there. People can't afford cars and so. And I'm not sure, I don't think, is there a line that goes up there?
Yes.
Line at Oak.
Okay, okay.
But it doesn't go very often. But that is, we hope that the TSP allows us to have a mechanism that lets Trinmet know what our desires are.
You know, while we're on that particular topic, I ride the bus to Portland pretty much every day. And one of the things that I see as a real deficiency in the transportation specifically related to Trinmet is that we've got a transit center in downtown Oregon City and there's no parking. So you either have to walk a really long ways to get to that transit center or you have to take another bus to get there. So that, to me, that's kind of like, why would you have a transit center and virtually no parking at all? And there's no free parking. It's all, you have to pay downtown.
Right.
So I either park at the top of the hill or I drive into the park and ride in Milwaukee. So it's like, the one place you would think that it would be most convenient to park, there is none.
Right, good comment.
But, you know, that's the one thing about the transportation system that I think maybe Oregon City can influence is just encouraging a way to create convenient parking adjacent to that transportation system. The one thing that I notice on this map, and we had a conversation at the last TSP meeting that I attended, this map only shows the growth in Oregon City. There's a lot of growth that happens beyond Oregon City, but it affects the transportation because there's a lot of people driving through Oregon City to get to other locations. So even though the dots aren't showing up on here, you have growth happening in Canby and you have Malino and Malala and different places.
And if you were to dive into those luscious technical memos that we write, you would find that there's pretty significant growth on the state system related to growth outside of the city. I mean, it's one of the, one of the clear findings is that growth and traffic, a big piece of it, has nothing to do with starting or stopping in the city. But, you know, that's the nature of the state highway system. I mean, they serve a lot of, you know, land that's not in the adjacent city. So then, you know, that affects your accessibility and some of the safety and travel speeds and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, I venture to say that probably at least two thirds of the people that use Highway 213 or Highway 99E going through Oregon City are not originating in Oregon City.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a big piece. All right, no more measles. Onto funding. So Nancy was mentioning realistic funding. Believe it or not, when I first started doing TSPs, we were not bound by how much the projects cost. We used to do, because at that point, state regulation didn't require it. So we'd do what I would call an aspirational plan, which says, if you really want to do everything you want to do, here's all the projects that you would need and here's all the things they would cost. And, you know, never mind that, you know, like a city of Beaverton, which at that time was about 50,000 people, the ticket was about $2 billion. Never, never mind that. Of course, a lot of that was on state facilities. But these days, we are required to make sure that the city has a reasonable likelihood of getting funding to build the projects they need.
Thank you.
That's a key phrase.
Thank you.
And that, well, that's a reasonable thing to do, right? That's a prudent planning principle. The problem comes is when there's a disparity between what you can afford and how much you want to grow. Because at some point in time, how much growth you have will need perhaps more facilities and more funding than you currently take in. That's a standard paradox for most every city I work in, frankly. And so we're usually coming to boards such as yourself about this point in the process and say, you know, if everything stays the way it is and we collect money the way we're currently collecting money in Oregon City, you're going to have roughly that number by the year 2035, $10 million for capital projects. And if you know anything about capital project planning, that is half of a jug handle. That is not much, not much projects, especially for that long a period. That is a very small number.
Is that the gas tax?
I believe is the gas tax increase.
There's also limitations, statutory limitations on the gas tax for using it in the right of way for operations and maintenance.
How long you collect it before you have to expend it?
No, no, that you can only, well, we can talk about it later.
Okay, so.
Anyway, this was, this is gas tax money.
Yeah, so.
That's not very much money in.
No, it's not any, it's not much money in any city, let alone in Oregon City, so.
Well, isn't that the capital question is not how much can you grow, but how much can you afford to grow? Because eventually, someone's got to pay for it.
They are paired together, right?
Yeah.
Well, the next, the next form of revenue is what growth pays.
Usually, yeah, usually how you pay for growth is you have the system development charge dedicated to all the different public utilities and one of them being transportation. And the city currently has a plan like that now. They already collect every time of, you know, any kind of new development comes in, they pay a fee in that direction. And usually about the time you do a TSP update or this something, any time you do a complete master plan update, the project lists on that, that reflect that fee will change. And so you have to kind of reconsider what the fee should be. The trade off is, there's always market forces at hand, you know. It doesn't matter what technical guys like me say. At some point in time, you know, there's a political will that has to exert itself and say, nah, you know, we can't charge everything we like to charge or people, you know, development will go elsewhere. That always comes into play. I'd assume that it also comes into play here in Oregon City. So even though we could say you need $20,000 per household to build your infrastructure, chances are you're never going to charge more than half of that, at least in the near term. It's going to be a lot less. And so what happens then is, you know, you either don't grow as much as you think you're going to grow because you can't fund it, or you have to look for offsetting revenue somewhere else. So those are the obvious choices. And the normal, so the normal, the best tools you have right now for funding growth is system development charge. You do have another utility fee called the transportation utility fee. I think you call it pavement utility fee, right? And that's really just dedicated to maintaining the street you got. It's not building capital projects. Some other Oregon cities actually do use it for other purposes than maintenance. They use it for capital as well. But that would, that'd be something that, that would be a different way of going about it than what the city has done to date. So that'd be, have to be a conscious decision. So just, you know, this slide is really just kind of alert you to, I think, what you already know. As far as capital funding for city projects, it's very limited within that horizon.
Well, I see you've noted on here, the last option is going to the voters and asking for additional funding through other sources.
Sure. Yeah, I can't remember what approval process is for local gas tax. I know they're prohibited until that date because of a recent state legislation. But after that date, you can ask for that. You can vote yourself a local gas tax increment beyond. I mean, it's, a lot of cities in Oregon have that, a local gas tax increment of one, two, or three cents, I think. Eugene?
We're looking at that, the county's looking at options because it's countywide. There's not enough funding for capital transportation infrastructure. And the amount you get from a gas tax really isn't very significant for all the you have to get through to get it. And information is that Multnomah County and Washington County do have gas taxes. Clackamas does not. But it doesn't generate a whole lot. What really generates more money is to have some sort of a property tax levy that you, and then you can start getting enough money to actually do projects.
And that would be, that'd be another method of going to the voters to get a levy.
Correct, and the county's actually assembled all the cities in the rural Clackamas County cities and the incorporated areas to talk about it and get ideas and discuss it at the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. So you may see more about that in the future.
Right. That's a good solution if you can make it happen. I mean, certainly, Washington County's had a long track record of success because that's what they do through their MISTIP program.
And then there's also urban renewal funding, which it's been used to, not of high degree, but Seventh Street Quarter was completed partially with urban renewal. There was some local match on the Beaver Creek 213 intersection project that was urban renewal. And McLaughlin Boulevard Faces One and Two had local match through urban renewal. Phase Two is just under design now, so we haven't seen it yet. But then we've also, in the past, which we've also gotten money through metro federal funding and also community development block grant funding. Those are federal dollars which are drying up as well. And in the past, we've gotten about 25 million, $23 million through those sources in the last 14 years or so. And then, and then the jug handle was funded by the state through their Jobs and Transportation Act. So there are those big government kinds of investments in transportation. But I'm sure if you've read in the paper, heard on the radio, that there's plenty of, or seen on your computer, that there's a lot of controversy about continuing those programs, how much, how little, blah, blah, blah. So the future is not certain on that.
Sure. All right, good discussion. Oh, I need the rest of the map. Come on, here we go. I feel better now. So, again, the animation bug got me. So this is, you know, we used to call this map the street functional class map. But now we're being a little bit more thoughtful as we're overlaying on top of how the street is classified. We're thinking about what land uses are adjacent to the street to give the city and the developers a little more flexibility in terms of how the street might look if you're talking about either a new street project, which there are a few on here, or if you're talking about upgrading the standards, you know, any kind of redevelopment or infill project would be asked to build their frontage according to the current city standards. So what that means, and I won't go into great deal till, but you can, the way we've approached it is kind of those two levels of information. So you've got the functional class, which are the colors, colored lines. And then you've got the land use types, which are the toned areas. And so we're looking at the way of, looking at streets basically from edge to edge, including these specific zones, what we call walking zones, bike on street parking zones, the driving zone, and then the same on the other side. So each of those pieces can change depending on the function of the street and the fronting land use type. So that you can, in certain cases, have on-street parking along arterials, which in a lot of jurisdictions is verboten, mainly because usually the arterials, the speeds are so high, you wouldn't really want on-street parking. But the way we're approaching it with it as a part of this process is to give that kind of flexibility to tailor those things. There's a lot more information online through the memos that we wrote on this topic. But can I, I'll just pause for a second, see if you guys have any questions about that kind of a concept.
I think it's great, but, I mean, most of the right of way widths are like 60 feet.
Right.
And that looks like something that would need to go into an 80 foot.
Well, right, yeah, if you did all this in one place, right, it would certainly change the right of way needs.
Yeah, I think there's a need for some of those streets that connect other, you know, population centers in Oregon City. Some of them have woefully inadequate improvements. You know, sidewalks and bike lanes and that kind of thing.
Right, right.
I think the whole idea here is to, which is different, we used to just have a cross section for an arterial, one for a collector, one for a local street. And now we're having one for. And now we're having one for like an industrial collector street. The kinds of things you put on that would be probably different from something you'd put on a mixed-use street where the, where the buildings are up along the sidewalk. Or, you know, an industrial, do you really need on-street parking? Probably not, because there's probably a big parking lot right in front of the building. And so, that's why we're trying to be a lot, it's like a more context-sensitive design.
Yeah, that's a big...
And to sort of match the, what the street looks like with what the land use type is.
This is just showing all the different components that you could have.
Yeah, in this case, we, we did the full-meal deal. We put a median in the middle. We put, if you didn't catch the difference, you actually put the cars parked on the outside and the bike lane on the inside. So that's kind of a cycle track configuration. That, that basically allows the bikes to not worry so much about driver doors opening. There's a few of those in Portland at this point. But, you know, that's kind of, what you're visualizing here is the full-meal deal. You wouldn't do all those pieces in all cases. There's certainly the option where right-of-way is limited and you really can't do anything with the buildings that are there to do more of the minimum treatment. This just gives you the flexibility to flex when you can.
And to recognize that a different cross-section is appropriate for different land uses. To use the right-of-way as efficiently as possible and make it as, as comfortable for different, the different modes that we'll need to use it.
Maybe this is another weird question, but some of the unincorporated areas out, like in the hinterlands, you know, we're building streets and to our standards. And then there are those holdouts that will never annex into the city, you know, ever. And so, we have a really nice street, you know, along one of our subdivisions. And then we've got, you know, just pavement and a gravel path if you're lucky.
Right.
You know, and so, is there any kind of mechanism to continue with the improvements through unincorporated roadways?
Well, maybe we should, are you, are you meaning unincorporated?
Talking to the county about maintenance jurisdiction or any of that kind of stuff?
Well, many of them, like Holcomb Boulevard, we have transferred the jurisdiction, that is the city's. And we, the dilemma is, you're right, it's a, it's an old rural road that is not built to urban standards, let alone context-sensitive standards.
Right, yeah.
So that with those, it's very difficult to find money. You wait for the properties to develop alongside of it, and there's still some gaps. And we have a Holcomb Boulevard pedestrian enhancement plan, but it's funding that holds us back from... We did some sidewalks on one side, and now there's more to do. We didn't get them all done. We did what we could afford.
Yeah, because my wife and I walk along Partlow Road, and yay, the road has been realigned and it looks pretty good. And there's sidewalks and everything. It was probably, it looked like a difficult fit, you know, with the houses and the lots and, you know, the way the street went. But then when you walk along, then you walk along the sidewalk, and then all of a sudden, you're in that unincorporated area. And boy, you walk right out onto the roadway, and if you're not watching, it's...
Yep, there are sidewalks are spotty along Partlow. And we could look at forming local improvement districts. Those are never popular either, but it's a funding matter.
Yeah, yeah.
Paul?
Okay, I'm just wondering.
Okay, moving on. Let's see, so spacing standards, things we're looking at in terms of what the city already has provided for. But spacing standard, looking at a little bit different point of view. A lot of times you look at spacing standard for emergency vehicle access, those kinds of things, for vehicle safety. In this case, we're also looking for, you know, kind of how many, how far between blocks or crossings or trails or alleys or pet and bike circulation, you know? So we're trying to limit the number of kind of dead ends for pet and bike to go where they want to go so they don't have to go out and around the block, you know, the typical cul-de-sac kind of a problem. I understand the city already has pretty good policies in that regard, right? In terms of cul-de-sacs not being part of subdivision design. So Laura, include me in on.
You're limited as much as possible.
Right, I mean, there's certain, yeah, right. So, let's see, I don't think we have a lot more on that one. So whatever changes we're recommending as a part of either the street design standards or the spacing standards will influence development review application process and that kind of a thing. So those are, the decisions that we'll be vetting as we go forward, if we're looking at changes then, and we'll have to get staff to agree on that, but that's a reasonable thing to do in the community as well. So here's a principle that's being presented in the TSP. I don't think you've, well, maybe you've seen greenways before, but these are kind of a, where your, the emphasis is much more on walking and biking than it is on driving. So there's these things called neighborhood greenways. And it works well in certain parts of the city where terrain is less of a challenge. If you look, if you took a, look at the plateaus of the city, and if you tried to design a system that fit within those plateaus, that would be great. So the focus there is to kind of retrofit existing streets to better accommodate for beds and bikes and a little bit less for the movement of cars. And there's a diagram, it's fuzzy, I tried to make that not fuzzy. But there's, there's a diagram that shows you kind of how that would thread together. And there's, some of this is already in the plan as far as trails and street connections and that kind of thing. The one I'm a little curious about is that one that comes down from Holcomb. I'm not sure that's, I'll have to look at that one because I'm suspicious about that one.
I think that's in the Park Place Concept Plan.
Yes, yes.
Are you talking about the dash line?
Well, the dash line, no, the fat green line. I mean, aren't you, is that a big elevation change through there? Seems like that one's, seems like that's something we need to look at.
Yeah, I think we may comment on that. There is a realistic one.
That's what I thought.
There's a realistic, are you talking about greenways now or what? Because in terms of crossing Lindsay Creek through there, it would be conceivable to have a pedestrian crossing. Is that the Swan Avenue extension? Swan Avenue extension being a, a road for cars is pretty much pie in the sky, if you ask me. But I think having a pedestrian connection in there would be fabulous.
Okay, and that's what these are.
And even that's going to be...
This is not saying that wherever there's a green line, it should be a full-on road. But if it is an existing street, you could put a little bit more emphasis on the pets and bikes than there are presently.
You know, that, that's one thing I'd have to say about specifically Oregon City is that there is so much terrain involved. It actually might be helpful to have some sort of a map that showed that relief, you know, the, the elevation change. Because sometimes it's real easy to have a, a line that just kind of runs from point A to point B or whatever. And you, when you walk that, you find out it's really steep.
It might be more like this instead of that.
Switch bags.
Yeah.
Especially for a hiking trail, but...
All you have to do is just take, take a walk from downtown Oregon City up the hill, and you realize it's way easier in a car than it is on foot. I've, I've seen people going up Lynn Avenue on their bicycle, going up the hill. And I'm thinking, man, that is a lot of dedication.
Yeah, you know, I think the best opportunities for cycling for just running errands really is on the hilltop. And the good news is we've got lots and lots of residential up on the hilltop and lots and lots of commercial and services. So maybe we try to look for opportunities where it's more practical.
I was thinking maybe a rope pole. You could grab onto and just...
A tramp?
Yeah. Just a rope pole to get your bike up the hill.
Yeah, right.
So this kind of a greenways network is, it's, it's in, it's an, these are ideas that are in the current work that's being reviewed. So the city, you'll have to kind of weigh in on each of the pieces here. But the idea, as you can see, is to come up with a network where you can get, get around with a little bit more benefit to the bike and pet users. So I think we're asking your inputs on, you know, to us, it seems like a thing that the city's been asking for, at least some of the feedback we got at the first open house. I guess as the commission, I'm just wondering what your, if your thoughts about that kind of a system, does that make a lot of sense? Is there parts of the city where it might make more sense than others? Maybe it's not this elaborate, you know, citywide network, and maybe you look at it maybe in terms of a phasing kind of a thing. But obviously, we're looking at it from a master plan point of view, and the city has, you know, they can phase it in however, whatever priority it has funding allow. So does that seem to resonate with you guys, that kind of a concept?
To me, I guess I would just reiterate what I said, that terrain should be a, a major consideration in that. I think what Nancy said is very true. If I'm riding my bike around the hilltop area, that's pretty simple. But trying to get up and down from Main Street up to the hilltop, that's a whole nother deal.
Yes, yeah, only the elite cyclist can pull that off.
But then every once in a while, you know, people do make that trek between levels, you know? They go down to the library or...
Going down.
They go down, but they haven't come back up yet.
And they take the bus back.
And I see people walking up South End Road for, of all places, and that's really scary because people are...
And actually, that's a good point. A lot of people do use the bus to get their bike up the hill. They have that little bus rack on the front of the bus. So use that to get up to the top of the hill and then get off and ride.
Yeah, the other thing about that, that kind of, you know, approach is, you know, what, even though there's some of these lines go all the way from the top to the bottom or all the way from the east to west. I mean, the system is in place to use it for however much, like, makes sense for each user, right? They may only ride it for half a mile or a mile or something like that and be done. But, you know, the, the thinking of the system is you set it up for the long trips, the short trips, the commuters, you know, the recreational cyclists who, who if you, if you look at the studies of who wants to ride a bike and who is riding a bike, there's a big cushion of people that kind of want to ride a bike, that are kind of scared about riding a bike on the system that near their homes. So you're trying to find ways to make it a little bit more comfortable for them to do it.
You know, I would echo one thing that Paul mentioned. And I think that, to me, from the pedestrian standpoint, having discontinuity of sidewalks or safe walking zones is a big deal. I, I live over off of Pease Road near Leland Road. And there's a huge stretch of road there with virtually no sidewalks at all. And you may have a sidewalk for a couple of blocks. And then now you're back standing between the roadway and the drainage ditch, and you've maybe got 18 inches to walk. And that, that's pretty uncomfortable when cars are whizzing by 35 miles an hour.
Yeah, that's a challenge. I mean, we've had, we'll have ongoing discussions about this. But, you know, the, the problem comes with, with any development, you can only ask for them to go so far in making improvements off their side. There's the whole nexus problem. What would be best, what would be best would be have some pot of money that the city could accumulate and then go fill in gaps as they can. You know, they can hit the priority gaps around the city. But then again, you know, you saw that $10 million number. I don't, I don't think that would fund all the gaps in the sidewalks alone, right?
Yeah, I, I just think when you look at your, your green lines here, that's the kinds of continuation and continuity that needs to be focused on.
Okay.
Is where, where the path ends, what do you do then? Now, now you're standing next to a two-foot deep or three-foot deep drainage ditch and barely any shoulder on the road.
For a lot of people, that's the reason they're not walking or bikes are playing. But it's that low hanging fruit that could get more people out there.
Right, okay.
And then just one more thing. The highly populated area in South End and some of those places, I think, probably need a direct route to, you know, the central business district in the hilltop area, like the grocery stores and that kind of thing. Maybe somebody now would want to repair it.
Yeah, yeah, I kind of missed that one, didn't I?
Because that's, you know, that's already, that's almost all done.
It's almost all done, right?
Yeah, so you could...
And that's here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That's a really, that's a highly traveled one.
It's almost...
There's a lot of people that are on that.
The hilltops are the...
We just did Warner Melanie. And Warner Parrott has a little here, a little there.
Yeah.
Oh, in terms of filling a gap?
They're both, yeah, like, they're both Warners. They almost have a sidewalk all the way, except for in a few places.
Okay, great.
And, you know, your diagram earlier that showed the, the ideal cross-section of the street is, is nice in theory. But in reality, it'd be great just to have the sidewalk on one side of the street.
Exactly.
If, if you have no sidewalk, that's not so great. But if you had it on just one side of the street, that'd be 100 times better than having that.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that'll be recognized as part of the plan process. One is better than none, for sure.
And even on some of our roads, even having a wider shoulder, I know that's something that John and I have worked on in a few of our paving projects.
Yes, I agree.
Or I, on Warner Melanie, we eliminated the left turn lane and put in bike lanes on both sides. And it's working great. But on Lynn Avenue, doing a sidewalk and a bike lane, because it's so steep and the costs and impacts on properties, maybe looking at something just a little more practical, like a wider shoulder. At least it's, it's someplace that you feel like you're a little bit away from the traffic.
A little bit more space between you and the vehicle.
Are there places where you can just have asphalt pathways instead of, you know, full-blown sidewalks and curbs and gutters and all that stuff?
Yeah, our standard is for concrete sidewalks. It just, but we've always been open to...
Because it's, I mean, it's so much cheaper, and in some places, it's appropriate.
It kind of depends.
Well, like you said, just a wider shoulder is, is better.
And that's a nominal investment.
Well, that's the biggest one, though, is right-of-way acquisition if you, if you don't have it, I suppose.
Yep. Well, and some of the houses are really close to the road, too.
Yep, yes, they are.
So this, this is a topic that'll be near and dear to your heart here pretty soon. This concept of alternate mobility standards. So you were, you were both, all sounded familiar with level of service and volume to capacity ratio. And as a part of this process, I think we're going to have to revisit what the city is willing to accept in terms of maximum level of congestion. So this diagram on the screen shows you where you are today is the red circles, or ovals, I should say. And then to serve growth that's currently planned, you'd have to expect, accept a bit more congestion issue in the gray circles. So that's a dialogue we're just kind of beginning. But what we're, what we're thinking is that, a couple of things. One is it keeps the streets narrower for the other 20 hours of the day when traffic isn't really busy. It makes it more appropriate for other kinds of travel during that time of day. And it also recognizes the fact that funding is limited. We can't go and build the width and the capacity we need fully to do, serve those two or three or four hours that are busiest. You know, like I said, that's, it's not a new concept for Oregon City. All the other metro area cities are kind of in the same boat. But there will be a point in the process where we're going to ask you to, you know, kind of get comfortable with that kind of a change. Maybe it doesn't end up being exactly what's, what's indicated here, but it'll be something along those lines.
Can, can you just explain what the difference between LOSD and then the proposed standard?
LOSD, usually the, if you convert LOSD to a numeric equivalent, it would be right around, well, the top end is right around .9. So you're taking it up another tenth of a VC, basically. So you're, you're increasing the level of congestion a little bit more than 10%. I don't know if I ought to explain that anymore simply. But so normally, the way the volume capacity process works, it's, you know, imagine you've got a cup. When it's completely full, you're at one, and gradation's down from there. It's .9 is usually, between 1 and .9 is level of service E. Between .9 and .8 is level of service D. .8, .7, C, and it keeps on going. This, you know, and Oregon City in the past has a standard, which is level service D for signalized intersections. Interesting thing, and this'll be a techie geeky moment for you if you haven't heard this before. But signalized intersections, that factor is an average of all the, all the vehicle users of the intersection. Whereas for unsignalized intersections, that rating is really only the poor guy on the side street trying to get out onto the major street. Because the delay on the major street is virtually none, right? Because they're just going by, and the guy on the side street's waiting for a gap so he can turn out. So one is very specific to the side street. The other one is an average for all users of the intersection, though. To me, they kind of have different weights, at least in my mind. So you're going to allow, you know, so for a signal at level service D, level service D, you would expect to make it through this, the signal on one cycle, for example. Level service E, you might have to wait through more than one to get through in certain cases. Definitely certain approaches. Unsignalized, it's a little, you know, unsignalized is tough. It's a little different because, you know, the penalty and the delay is really just on the minor street approaches. You know, and so, it's a little bit different kind of a situation.
But I find it extremely annoying if I have to sit too... But I find it extremely annoying if I have to sit too long to get out on my street to go to my work. So what are you talking about? How long of a delay is that? Can you put that into any minutes that we can understand?
Yeah, I'm a little fuzzy on how long that is, and it always sounds too low when I say it in the past. If you look at the book, you look it up, and you see what an average, average vehicle delay for those certain things, it's always, you know, somewhere less than a minute, which always sounds low because, you know, you have personal experience where you go out there and you have to wait two or three minutes. But it's over, it's measured over the course of an hour, right? So traffic ebbs and flows on the main street. Some cars come up and they see a gap and they go. Sometime cars come up and they see 50 cars coming, and they're waiting for like two minutes. And so when you tell them it's less than a minute, they think you're nuts. But on average, on an hour, that's about what level of service E is, a minute. Now, see, the thing, the thing to do there, I mean, it's kind of hard to just take this at face value, because usually when we see situations like that, where you really have people that want to use a side street, you have two, you have at least a couple options. One, you look at that intersection, you see if it's, it makes sense to upgrade the traffic control. So you're not going to make it a stop sign-controlled intersection anymore. Or you can convert it from a two-way stop to a four-way stop. Or does it actually have enough demand where ultimately someday it could be something like a signal or roundabout, or those kinds of things. And those are all decision points you have to kind of go through, think through this thing. The other thing that you can do is do what was kind of, you know, was done downtown through the last plan, was it provided more connection points. You know, so you had new extensions on in 99, so you would lessen the demand on existing connections. Some of them are signalized and some of them aren't. So it's that kind of thinking you have to go through, but still you need to have a maximum threshold, I won't say, okay, yeah, a maximum threshold of congestion that needs to be in your books, you know. So when developments come in, you're going to run the numbers, and you're going to see where there is good, bad, or indifferent.
Because if we don't have a maximum level of service, then we can never require new development to make improvements.
Right. But one of the things you just said really resonated with me is that if you have the ability to pick an alternate route, some of these things can be self-correcting.
Right.
Because if I go out to that intersection, and every day I'm going to have to wait through a couple signals, I may find an alternative route. But in a case where you don't have an alternative, if you come out of your neighborhood and there is no other way to get out of my neighborhood, that gives you a different sense of kind of being stuck. I have no other choice. I can't go out the other route to get around this thing. And so that bottleneck becomes a real aggravation if I have no other alternative. But if you've got, like you're saying, on 99, you'll have maybe three different points where you can make that maneuver, it gives you alternatives.
Right, right. So look, to be honest, there certainly will be cases where, you know, access options are limited or none, and it's going to be a high delay, and they're going to have to wait. But the problem will be, you know, the side street volume's too low to justify putting in a signal, and then you're just, you're kind of stuck. And I hate to say it like that, but there's always cases like that. You can't solve the problems everywhere through this kind of a process. You try to do, you know, frankly, what you're trying to find is the best places to put your investment dollars. I mean, in the end, that's what we are looking for. We can't figure out, we can't solve all the problems as much as we'd like to. But there are solutions around it. I mean, you know, there's ways to redesign, well, it's only money, but, you know, so the vehicles can turn out, if it's an arterial type of thing, and there's nowhere in the middle, there's no refuge area in the middle, you could design it such that there is a refuge middle, so the car can turn out and wait, so they can wait, let one side go, and then they can wait in the middle, and then they can merge with the other direction. That's a common solution if you have the width to do it. It's not that big of a deal. So there's ways around this thing that we all have to think through. But the point of this slide is just to acknowledge the fact that the current standards are going to have to go up. If they don't go up, then the capital money to make the capacity to serve that higher demand's going to be much, much higher than what we've been talking about to date.
Well, Carl, if we just go to a really basic concept of adding lanes to a road, or, the other thing that happens is for, so for those two hours, you've got more capacity. That's great. They don't have to wait at the signal. However, the pedestrians who want to cross the intersection, they have that much more paving to cross, and it gets more and more difficult for the pedestrians. And so we're also looking at that kind of an approach, and what makes for, what does the community want in terms of sort of a more of a livability standpoint? Do they want the California arterials with, you know, just lots and lots of lanes? Which, that wouldn't fit in Oregon City. I'm being, I'm sort of exaggerating. But it's something that we're really wanting to focus on.
Yeah, it's an important piece. I mean, you could certainly upsize intersections, but there's a trade-off, especially for the pedestrians, people with mobility issues, you know, people with walkers don't appreciate an extra two lanes going across an arterial. And I guess the way I've come to think of it over time is, you know, we were so, we as transportation planners, were so hyper-focused on the peak hour pattern, we forgot, you know, there's 24 hours in a day, right? You know, so the other 20 hours where this traffic isn't nearly as heavy is what the rest of you have to live with when you're not commuting to and from work during the busy times of the day, so.
You know, the way I look at a highway is, is the doggone thing safe?
Yes.
I know it's going to get me from point A to point B. What are the considerations I have to take into account getting there? Am I going to hit somebody, a bicyclist, a pedestrian, a mother strolling, that kind of stuff, and somebody trying to get across? You know, it drives me crazy when I come up to a pedestrian. What's he going to do? What am I going to do? You know, it's a, it's a really a crapshoot in some cases. And then you've got the earphones, and they step off the curb in front of you without looking, and then you've got three people behind you, you know. So I'm looking for safety. I know that the plan is going to be efficient in terms of moving traffic, but the weakest link in the chain is what I'm looking for in terms to help, because I don't want to see AMR up ahead of me, you know, with three or four people laying on the, because somebody decided to take a chance on the side street and get into the, get into the flow of traffic, and oops.
There will be some safety components of the plan, because obviously, safety's important to us, too. The Clackamas County's working on a traffic safety plan, which they're sharing with us, and Metro is also developing a regional transportation safety plan, which they're not exactly sure how we're going to be using it throughout the region. But we are talking to Metro about that, and there's just some, just some pretty specific items that, what is it, the five, the five Rs, regulate? Anyway, there's some very specific, simple things that you can do to approach safety that we would, could make more of our program, a program, programmatic kind of a improvement for our transportation system, and that's something we want to explore while we're doing the TSP.
So let's see, I think I've talked about some of this. We covered a lot of this stuff in our discussion about the other diagram, but tolerating more congestion, allow safer, more comfortable streets for multiple travel, frees up pure capital funds for other uses. There's a lot of emphasis in the regional plan and in the city plan for sustainability. I, you know, I like sustainability, but the problem is sustainability has so many aspects to it. I wish somebody would pick a new word there. You know, there's financially sustainable, there's health sustainable, there's all kinds of sustainable, and it's...
I like due diligence. That's a new one.
Okay. But you get the idea. We're trying to be, we're trying to be, do all those kinds of things. So the last slide I have is just kind of pointing to the future. I mean, we've, we're going to come back to this body again, show you kind of what the projects are that we've got. We, as the management team, the consultants in the city, have come up with projects and the funding. If we have recommendations for new or amended funding sources, we'll bring those to you as well. Those are the discussions we're going to have before we actually get down to the last two bullets in the hearings, where you're actually looking for adoption, you know. So if we're saying there's enough important projects on there beyond what your capacity to fund currently, what do you need to make up the difference? And are you willing to advance those, you know, as a group? Are you willing to make recommendation to the county, to the commission, if that's something that needs to be pursued? Because you're not going to, I wouldn't think it's going to be an action as a part of the adoption process to make any of those funding changes. It's just going to be a recommendation for further study beyond it. That's its own separate process. I mean, if you change heat programs or anything of that sort, that takes on its own process beyond that. So we're thinking we'll probably be ending the TSP update by March, April of next year. Springtime, we should be complete. That's all I had of my presentation.
Carl, you might, or Laura, maybe you can give them a little more information about all that's on the website, because there's a lot there that, if you know how to navigate around it.
Sure.
And not only is it, there's these big, big, long tech memos, but some of them, we've also prepared summaries that is a little easy to get an idea of. This is something I'm interested in. And then while Laura's doing that, Carl, back to level of service and alternate mobility standards. Can you just talk a little bit about reliability and how people are getting more and more interested in reliability rather than having a free lane in front of them all the time?
Reliability is, it's basically, it's, it describes how likely you are to get where you want to go within the same time, day after day after day, is what reliability is. It's very important to, you know, certain time-sensitive travelers, you know, freight community is very concerned about reliability. They don't, they don't like that they're driving 30 miles an hour on the freeway, but they like it less if it's 60 minutes one day, it's 30 minutes the next day, it's two hours the day after that. That causes all kinds of disruption to their system. And so the focus, really, for the most part, on the state system right now is, has been on, by the way, we can't serve all the demand that growth is going to bring. So our, their job at this point is to figure out what systems to deploy to make those facilities more reliable. It has to do with all kinds of things about travel information, smarter traffic signals, things that have been talked about but haven't been implemented yet, like, no, I won't say it. Well, okay, I'll say it. Pricing. At some point, the discussion will come out where we're talking about actually pricing certain state facilities, meaning you have to pay to use it at certain times of day.
Toll roads.
Toll roads, toll bridges, toll highways.
Sometimes what this is, is congestion pricing, where you can reduce, if people don't want to pay, use it at 5:00 at night, they don't have to. They can go at 3:00, and their toll is less, or whatever.
Right. The way the, well, not that they're advancing that to this point, it's on their list of policies. It's something they could consider.
There's a lot of tools in the toolbox.
There's no, there's no plan at this point to do anything of that sort, but as a guy who's looked at this a lot, cities who have problems they can't build their way out of eventually end up talking about pricing.
Well, you know, to some degree, I think the whole idea of self-correction of that problem happens when, if you have a deadline to get to a certain location day after day, and you realize you're always getting there late, you're going to make adjustments to leave a little earlier. And as you do that, you'll discover that, wow, my commute time just got cut by 20%, by just leaving 10 minutes sooner, you know. And so those kind of adjustments can be made if you've got the flexibility to leave when it makes more sense for your transportation.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, the only comment, other comment I'll make about pricing before Laura gives us the World One Tour is that, what, the evidence I've seen in other cities that do pricing is it's, the people who use it the most are not people that use it every day. It's the people who really need to be somewhere on a specific day, at a specific time, and they're willing to pay a few bucks to make sure they get there by that time. So it's not like the commuter Joe will drive it back and forth every day at the same time and pay the same amount. He may adjust his timing pattern, or he may go another route in a different mode, but a certain day, he needs to be across town at an appointment at 3:00 PM, and he'll pay three bucks to get there. Those tend to be the people who use it the most, frankly. The people who have, who need that high reliability factor and are willing to pay a few bucks to do it.
All right. So this is our project website, O.C. Transportation Plan.
And it's on our website, our Oregon City website?
Yes, we link to it on our Oregon City website. We also have Twitter and Facebook feeds and posts that link to it as well.
Hey, Laura, where is it on our front page, or where do you find it on our website?
If you were to go to O R City dot org, which is our city homepage, you can get to it in a variety of ways. Right now, we have, right here...
Well, there's the open house.
It'll link to the open house, which also links to our website, and that should flash through this top one in a minute as well. So, back to the TSP website, O.C. Transportation Plan at org.
So it's on there right now on the header because of the open house. If, once the open house is over, is there another way you need to find this website?
You can get there through public works, or you can go in through the search. We're trying to keep it up on this bottom row as much as possible. It's only if something more important comes up that it'll bump us out of the queue, but we're trying to stay on the queue in that group of the four most important things for as long as possible.
Thanks.
Yeah. So the TSP website, this bar on the side will get you wherever you need to go. Our city homepage has just basic information, our About page, links to our project objectives, what a TSP is, what our process. It'll go through a flow sheet chart in that section. Also, as you know, our TSP process is made up of 12 technical memorandums. This has a summary of what each of those are going to be. Right now, we have 10 of them completed. So where are these technical memorandums?
They're still draft, though.
They're all draft. And then you know, at the end of this process, you'll be seeing it as a legislative file with the code changes and the TSP, which will hopefully get amended as an ancillary document to the comp plan. So if you want to see what we're working on and be a part of the process, which we encourage everyone to do, you can click on the Draft TSP page. This has a link to every document that we've done. They're all in draft form, obviously, until they get adopted. And we're sort of kind of moving through this process and taking in more comments all the time, until we get to the end to make our master document. There's summaries, so if you want to, you don't want to read the whole thing, you just want to know what the key important parts are, or things that you should pay attention to. We've highlighted those in some of the summaries. This is all the memos, and then at the bottom, you can post comments. It's in a blog form, so I can post a new comment, or I can reply to somebody else's comment, my thoughts and feelings on that. There's also acronyms and abbreviations to get you through all that technical stuff. When you look at the documents, you can either print them, write your comments on them, and then you can scan them in and upload your comments. So you can upload new documents to the website, or you can do this blog-type format if you have any questions as well, or any comments. We have a news feature, so it'll tell you when meetings are coming and just different things. Every month, we have a question. So this month, our question is, asks the public if they would rather prefer that we focus on more expensive projects that may have a higher impact, or take our limited amount of funds and do like sidewalk gaps and things like that. We haven't had anyone reply to that yet. We do have a Get Involved link that goes through all the different ways that you can get involved. We have an interactive comment map, which I'll get to in just a minute. And then we also have different documents that maybe have been helpful to us, or the public has uploaded. If some member of the public has some sort of article that they read somewhere that they found to be helpful, it's on here. You can upload them. File uploads is where you want to upload your own documents. You can do that. Contact Us is our contact information. And this comment map, we are quite proud of. This is where we can pick a specific site and a specific problem, and as a member of the public, tell you what you liked about that area, or if there's an improvement that's needed. You can filter them by bike, bus, and so forth. If you scroll down, they're all listed, so...
You can also comment on other people's comments.
You can thumbs up, thumbs down, like these people, so it'll automatically be 50/50, so someone, somewhere along the line has either liked this person's comment. So... So, this person's comment says that they have enjoyed the work that we've done on Beaver Creek Road. That is a nice comment. Not all the comments are positive. We tend to see people...
Really?
And then you can, again, add your discussion, so you can do a blog within that comment if you want to as well. Or you can just zoom in on the map and see what people have put where. So, here's a pedestrian comment on Lynn Avenue. Click on that.
That's great.
And anyone, you don't have to log into the website to leave a comment, you could just submit it.
How many people have you guys participated? How many people have actually...
You know how many we've got?
Just around.
I just have you laid it down. There are two pages of these comments.
Yeah.
Like this. I don't remember the number.
So, maybe like about 40, 50?
I think it's 50. It's somewhere even numbered.
That's pretty good. This is such a great website, and it just kills me that, you know, the only people that would probably log into this and do this are the people in this empty room. And then, and then you won't have, you'll fill the room when you implement any of the traffic stuff that is gonna be in the plan.
What do you mean, the empty room? There's just a few empty chairs.
I have the same, though. We've gone to a lot of meetings, we have comment boxes in a lot of places. And so, all those comments that we get, we put on here so the public can see. So, we wanna make sure that the public is a big part of this process, so you can see every, all of our drafts, you can comment on everything, and you can see everybody else's comment and comment on those, too. So, not necessarily all of those comments are coming through the website. They might have come in through different avenues, or just been emailed to us and we upload them, too.
And Laura's been around, she's, you've probably gone to half a dozen meetings and put her table up with the maps and information so that people can learn what we're doing and spread the word a little bit. It is, that outreach thing is, it's a tough thing.
It's great, though, because I, I mean, I will say that if I had a choice between, you know, going on the computer and coming to an open house with, you know, if you've got a busy schedule and you've got too many things going on, games and kids and all that other stuff, I'll go on the computer way before I go to the open house and have all this stuff to participate in with. It's great.
We've sent notices and utility bills twice to everyone who received a utility bill in Oregon City. So, we'll see a couple of comments after that, or at least we'll notice that our website will spike, and we'll get a lot more visitors if we don't see comments. We have flyers posted around periodically and...
It's in the Oregon City Trail News.
Trail News, we've done article every time. So, this is our upcoming meetings, and you'll notice that we have an open house on June 18th, which we've referred to earlier. So, our open house poster today, while we put it in different city facilities, Lloyd's going, Lloyd Purdy with Main Street is going door-to-door and posting it on doorways for us. We today went and dropped posters off from everywhere, from Le Schwan to Steve's Market, to all the Starbucks in town and all these different places to try and catch people's attention, grocery stores, things like that. So, we're trying to get the word out as much as possible that we have meetings. If not, we have a website where you can stay involved at your level of comfort.
And we don't have a very big budget for public involvement?
Right.
Or public outreach, I would say, but, and we forgot to mention that to do the project, we got a grant from ODOT about, what was it, about $230,000, Carl? And those kinda grants don't, they're not like Cadillac where you can have a big public outreach budget either. But we're doing, Laura's just doing a great job of trying to get it, get the information out as as many people as possible.
You know, that, just a comment, I think you've done a great job of getting the word out. I've seen several of the notifications, and obviously, I'm aware because I'm involved here. But I just, I, it struck me as such an ironic situation that we had a lady come and complain about the transportation system. And the impact of the zoning on the transportation system in their neighborhood, and yet you don't have any comments about that particular intersection. I would think there would be like dozens of comments about that intersection from that group. And it's just, you know, I guess that's a prime example of just people not using the resources that you've made available.
Because we've also been to the Citizen Involvement Commission, and I go there, or Citizen Involvement Council, I go there and remind them about things, but...
There is a new rep association.
And there's got a rep there, Berkeley Hills has a rep, so... I think sometimes people just don't put two and two together.
Yeah, I guess not.
And then all our past meetings, we put summaries of what we talked about in then our presentations, so you can catch up if you missed a meeting as well.
Very good. Thank you. Are we done?
I believe so.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you very much for your paying attention to us for this slide.
Great presentation.